... the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation, underground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first order of business is an oath of office. At the last council meeting, we went through the applications for the Ward One Council Representative. And today, we have Robert Starcher, who has been selected as the Ward One Councilman, who are going to be sworn in by the Honorable Judge Kevin Dunn. And the Bible is going to be held by his wife, Chris Starcher. So if you please approach the front, I think we have a microphone here.
You can stand across. Remember when you guys got married and did this?
No.
Oh.
It's too long ago.
Okay. Bob, can you, can, can you put your hand on the Bible there, it's the first thing. Can you raise your right hand? Do you, Bob Starcher, being first duly sworn, swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Ohio, the Charter and ordinances of the City of Medina, Ohio, and will you faithfully and honestly and impartially discharge all the duties involving upon you as Ward One Councilman for the City of Medina, Medina County, Ohio? If so, say "I shall."
I shall.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you Judge. Now that we have seven again, will the clerk please call the roll?
Coin.
Here.
Heffinger.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Starcher.
Here. Ring of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes of the regular council meeting of November 13, 2018, as prepared and submitted by the clerk, be approved.
Second.
Discussion on the minutes. Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Reports of the standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to council and will meet again in two weeks, which of course will be our last finance meeting, I think, for the rest of the year. Health, Safety and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no meetings scheduled, but in the last few weeks, I did attend, as a representative of health and safety, a meeting with the Fire District Committee and the Life Support Team Advisory Board. Both was within the last couple of weeks, but there's no meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you. Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report. I have a number of issues in committee, pending issues in committee that we'll begin to address next year.
Thank you. Streets and Sabots Committee, Mr. Heffinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report at this time and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Emerging Technologies Committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report and no meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have several for finance. We have 18-201 budget amendments, 18-202, 2019 contribution to Medina County Office of Older Adults, 18-203, sick time cash out, 18-204, renewal health insurance with Medical Mutual of Ohio, 18-205, MCRC part-time pay scale, amend 3102E, 18-206, approved water connection for 5390 Lake Road, 18-207, amend ordinance 7517 Teamsters contract, 18-208, resolution of support for Eliza Northrup Trail, 18-209, expenditure for Epic Aviation for Jet A Fuel, 18-210, fund advance chip grants, 18-211, rollover outstanding advances for the general purpose capital, and 18-212, rollover outstanding advances for the general fund. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Like to welcome back Councilman Bob Starcher. Looking forward to working with you again. The Candlelight Walk was Friday, November 16 through Sunday, November 18. We had great weather and attendance this year. I'd just like to compliment Main Street Medina on what a great job they do with that. I've talked to a number of the businesses and restaurants on the square, and they said it's been their best Candlelight Walk, revenue-wise, in years. And we were also fortunate to have Ohio Magazine there to recognize the city as one of Ohio's best hometowns. Bicentennial community events, we're wrapping up this coming Friday, November 30, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. There's going to be a concluding event for the bicentennial year at the United Church of Christ Congregational, which is 217 East Liberty Street, or the northeast corner of Liberty and Broadway. And this will be kind of a birthday party-style atmosphere with pizza and cake. And what they're hoping to do is, at about 6:30, weather permitting, is to try to get everybody out on Broadway Street there, close Broadway first, but get everybody out on Broadway Street there in front of the courthouses in the shape of a 200, and try to get some photos of it with a drone. So we're praying for good weather for that. The South Court Home Tour is scheduled from Sunday, December 2, from noon to 5. The refresh, there will be refreshments and the tour start will be at St. Paul's Church, 317 East Liberty Street. Tickets are $10, and they're available at Miss Molly's, Medina County Visitors Bureau, Coe Beans Cafe, and Root Candles. Tickets will also be available the day of the tour at St. Paul's Church. The homes that are going to be premiered this year are at each of the wards of the city where the homeowners associations have begun. And the first is at 301 East Friendship Street, 301 East Friendship Street. Another one at 217 West Homestead Street. One at 614 South Court. One at 522 South Broadway. And at 431 West Washington Street. And in addition to those homes at 201 South Prospect, the McDowell Phillips Slay will be under a tent in the front yard of 201 South Prospect, which is right where Washington Street deadends in the Prospect. And there'll be a tent there for photos. And the, in addition to that, we will have the Square Engine House Community Room open during those same times for those, the room is not completed yet, but it's well on its way. And for anybody that wants to see the progress that was made in the upstairs there, which will eventually be the office for the Archive Commission and/or Main Street, as well as the CDC. And then, just a upcoming traffic pattern change with some of the congestion that we're seeing on East Liberty Street, along the parking deck and the old Common Please Court Building. We've researched, talked to ODOT, and are looking at changing the left turn-only lane to left turn and straight through, because what we're having is with the single straight-through lanes, the traffic is getting backed up and then not moving, just because of the congestion. So this will give us some ability to stack the traffic more efficiently. We're going to do it with signage and pavement markings to begin with, and we've ordered a mast arm, and once that arrives, we'll actually have a arm out over the lanes directing, directing the vehicles to the change. We're also going to add a sign on the far right of that mast arm that recommends the trucks head straight out west Liberty Street, instead of trying to make those tight turns around the square and then eventually onto Smith or Lafayette, to try to get them out to our industrial area, and then send them south on Commerce Drive. And from there, they can access both Lake Road and Commerce Drive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham, Director Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to welcome Councilman Starcher, and there are a number of items at the end of the agenda that originated with finance, and I will address those when we get there.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report. Bob, welcome to the breach.
Thank you.
Chief Kenny, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one issue. We have switched over our radio system to the P-25 system. We did that about three weeks ago. Two weeks ago, we were able to test it and put it to task during the hospital incident we had on November 13. Had it not been for that radio system, I don't think we would have been able to address that situation as efficiently and as effectively as we could. I don't think our old radio system, actually, I know our old radio system would not work in the lower levels of the South Medical Building and the North Medical Building. So I'm thankful that we were able to transition to that system prior to that incident happening, because it really helped us out. And I'd also like to congratulate Bob and Chris, and it's good, I look forward to working with you again.
Thank you.
Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple items to note. First, I'd like to congratulate Councilman Starcher. Look forward to working with you. And we would like to invite you to our next Economic Development Committee meeting. It's the most exciting one besides budgets, which is Tuesday, December 4, at 8:00 AM, and I will send you a calendar invite.
Oh, thank you.
Yes. Obviously, it's a public meeting, everybody's welcome to attend, but just to kind of help get you up to speed on some things, I thought it might be helpful. So the next thing is, we have a couple of ribbon cuttings coming up. Our next ribbon cutting day is December 7. We do these in conjunction with Main Street Medina and the Chamber of Commerce. So our first one is at 11:00 AM. It's the Sergeant Cleans Car Wash. It was formerly Wheelie Clean, and so it's now going to be a new name, it's under new ownership, and that's at 969 North Court Street. It's under renovation right now. And then at 1 o'clock is Aspendental. This is a new business that is in the Medina Shopping Plaza at 941 North Court Street, which is the new development that just occurred there. Then at 2 o'clock is the Pulp Juice and Smoothie Bar. This is another brand-new business at 1122 North Court Street, and that is kind of right by Orange Theory Fitness. And then at 3 o'clock is First Impression, new location and new program under Jobs for Ohio graduates. They are at 140 West Washington Street in the lower level of Miss Molly's, and that's at 3 o'clock. So if you're able to attend, we'd love to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have, welcome, Councilman Starcher. It'll be great working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Painter, Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report, and Bob, welcome back.
Thank you.
Mr. Wright, Medina County Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple quick updates from the REC. 2019 Winter Broch, Program Brochure will be online by December 12. It'll be inserted in the Post newspapers on Saturday, December 15, and the hard copies will be available on Sunday, December 16, at the REC Center. The next REC Advisory Board meeting is Thursday, December 20, at 7:30 AM at the REC Center, and congratulations to Councilman Starcher. See you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gladys, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report. Councilman Starcher, I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi, Bob.
Hi, Pat.
Welcome. Update on our construction projects, East Smith Road, we're hopeful that we can open that by the end of this week. It is weather-dependent. Work was postponed today because of weather, and it's not looking great for tomorrow. If we can get a couple of nice days, we should be able to open by the end of the week. If not, it'll be early next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pacoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. How would it look, Mr. Starcher, if I didn't greet you as well? So congratulations, and look forward to working with you also.
Thank you.
So real brief, the Candlelight Walk went well. I want to acknowledge our normal crew, our street crews, Jansen in the Parks, Bobby Duker from Chippewa, and everyone else for their efforts that were involved. Additionally, I want to take a moment and acknowledge Jonathan Coyne IV, not Council President Jonathan Coyne, but his son, and the son of his wife Jennifer Coyne, for his participation in the lighting of the buildings and the street lighting. Every year for the past six years, Johnny, as we call him, has been with our crew as we light the buildings and the trees. So our setup has been, we have one person at every control box, which there are four master control cabinets. And with that, we would ignite the switches. So we turn the switches on, and everything else would be lit after the gazebo and the Christmas tree. So over the years, we chatted about automating this to use just one switch, but that was cost-prohibitive. We had prices from various contractors, anywhere from $3,000 to $4,000 to pull wire, install resistors, and that kind of mechanism, to loop all the points of power. So Johnny wanted to automate the system, so he engineered five relay switches with remote controls. The council members operated them from the gazebo, and it all worked well. Additionally, a special thanks to Dan Gladys, our Building Official, who worked with Johnny. He's a very humble guy here. He tweaked the operation, working with Johnny, so that there were no glitches. Johnny is an eighth grader at the Medina City Schools, and he is a very impressive young man, so we appreciate his efforts.
He enjoys working with you also.
He's a good kid. Takes after his mother.
I think he takes after his father, but I'll just check that out. Okay, confirmation of council appointments. We have three of them. CRA Housing for Bob Starcher, term expiring 12/3118. Fireman's Dependence Board, Bob Starcher, for a term expiring 12/3118. And Cable Access Committee, Bob Starcher, for a term expiring 12/3120.
Move to confirm council's appointments.
Second.
Discussion on confirmation of council appointments. Will the clerk please call the roll on confirmation of council appointments.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
We have one confirmation of Mayor's appointment. We have for the McDAC Board, Brian Hilberg, for a term expiring 12/3119.
Move to confirm the Mayor's appointment.
Second.
Discussion on confirmation of the Mayor's appointment. Will the clerk please call the roll on the Mayor's appointment.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Notice to Communications and Petitions, there are none, no unfinished business. Introduction of Visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during a portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed at the Chair in a reasonable time limit, approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered in the minutes. Members of the public will be permitted, or afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the Chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Nobody. Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 165-18, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of one 2019 Freightliner 108 SD conventional chassis, single axle plow truck from Valley Freightliner, Inc., for the Street Department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Pacoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. So our fleet for snow and ice control, there are eight large plow trucks. This vehicle replaced a 1997 truck that served the city well. We will not see this new vehicle until April of 2019, thus the replacement truck. Actually, the 1997 will serve us, will serve the public through the winter. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the ordinance?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance 165-18 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 166-18, ordinance authorizing the purchase of one 2020 Freightliner 114 SD conventional cab and chassis, and one Ampli Roll Hook Lift from Valley Freightliner, Inc., for the Sanitation Department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Pacoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. So in the Sanitation Department, we have three roll-off trucks, as they're referred to, also known as a hook lift truck. And these trucks service our commercial customers, roll-off containers, compactors for the commercial businesses. This vehicle that we're asking to purchase will replace a 1997 roll-off truck, which we did sell in the auction and received $17,000 for in the most recent auction, so we were happy for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the ordinance?
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance 167-18, and ordinance authorizing the increase of expenditure to protect sales for the Police Department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Chief Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. President. This increase is to pay for the SWAT vests that we purchased for our officers.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the ordinance?
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance 167-18 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 168-18, and ordinance amending ordinance number 141-18, passed September 24, 2018, authorizing expenditure to your construction for private home rehabilitation at 240 East Union Street as part of the fiscal year 2016 chip grant program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Mendel.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an ordinance that would amend the previous ordinance to allow for a purchase order increase to a chip program property here at 240 East Union Street here in the City of Medina. It would increase it about a little over $1,000 to 40, to just over $47,000. This would be closing out this one, as this grant is ending at the end of this month. The emergency clause is requested so that we can have the money to the contractor in a quick manner, so that they can have liquidity to continue bidding on chip program projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance and emergency clause? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the emergency clause?
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Ordinance 168-18 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 169-18, ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and to award a contract to the successful bidder for one-year supply of various kinds of maintenance materials needed for the streets and water lines, including but not limited to salt, the chemicals used in the treatment of water, and water meters to be used in various departments of the City of Medina, Ohio.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Pacoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. As stated, this is our one-year annual bid for the 2019 year for maintenance materials and possibly salt, including stone aggregates and concrete. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Ordinance 169-18 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 170-18, ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative use agreement with Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, OFCC, for the Medina Twin Towers Memorial Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As this is a cooperative use agreement with the State of Ohio, OFCC, to be able to execute money that was granted to the Medina, the Rotary Club of Medina, which was $25,000 by the State of Ohio to help partially fund the costs of the recently completed Medina Twin Towers Memorial Project. As this is now Medina asset, the memorial, plus it's on a city-owned parkland, we have to do, in order for the money to come from the state to the Rotary, the City of Medina has to do this cooperative use agreement to be a pass-through for that $25,000. So this is part of making that happen once council approves the, once this is approved, then we can coordinate with the, with OFCC to have that occur, and then we'll just do a pass-through to the Medina, to the Medina Rotary. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the ordinance?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 170-18 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 171-18.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move at this time that ordinance 171-18 be polled from tonight's agenda.
Second.
Any discussion on removing ordinance 171-18? Will the clerk please call the roll on the removal of ordinance 171-18?
Coin.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Ordinance 172-18, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Ohio Regional Development Corporation for the administration of the fiscal year 2018 Community Housing Impact and Preservation Chip Program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Mendel.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is basically to, an ordinance to fund the contract and agreement that we have with ORDC to manage our chip program coming into project year 2018.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ordinance 172-18 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 173-18, an ordinance amending ordinance number 80-18, passed May 14th, 2018, relative to awarding a contract for the construction of a new columbarium wall at the Spring Grove Cemetery.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This project, the columbarium wall at Spring Grove Cemetery, was bid twice. The first bid, we only received one bid, and our board of control elected not to accept that bid and asked us to rebid it. We rebid the project last month. We did receive three bids, the lowest of which came in approximately $6,410 above the previously authorized amount. We determined that we didn't think we were going to get a better bid, and we did not want to alter the project, so we're recommending that the council pass this to increase the authorized amount so we can enter into a contract to complete the project.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Simpson?
Serving on the cemetery commission, I agree with everything that Mr. Patton said and glad that we awarded a contract. We were advised at our last cemetery meeting that all the niches in the current columbarium wall have been sold, so the quicker we can get this project moving, which probably will not start till early spring, the better. It is needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Starcher?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 173-18 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 174-18, an ordinance rezoning a portion of the property located at 137 West Liberty Street, part of parcel numbers 028, 198, 21, 376, 083, and 084, from PF Public Facilities to C2 Commercial Business.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion. Mr. Mendel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As you said, this is a rezoning request. It missed, proposed by the city of Medina. It's land currently owned by the city of Medina as part of the liberty parking, public parking lot that we have within the downtown area. On September 13th, the Planning Commission reviewed a recommendation to rezone the property, which is approximately a 40-foot-by-80-foot portion of properties that you outlined. After reviewing the request and analysis, the Planning Commission recommended approval to city council. The request to rezone the property, as you said, is from Public Facilities, PF, to C2 Central Business, and there was a condition that the rezoning should not be effective until the proposed subdivision creating the lot is executed and recorded with Medina County. So, this has gone through all its legislative processes with finance, with Planning Commission as a recommending body, Finance Committee, public notice, city council public notice period hearing, public notice period, public hearing, and then tonight, ordinance review. So, I would just request that it be approved this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coyne?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Ordinance 174-18 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 175-18, an ordinance repealing Chapter 713, aggressive solicitation prohibited of the codified ordinances of the city of Medina.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Huber.
Thank you, Mr. President. Some time ago, the city of Medina passed ordinances defined in Chapter 713 of our code, essentially criminalizing aggressive panhandling. At the time that we passed these ordinances, most of the cities in Ohio had similar ordinances to deal with aggressive solicitation or aggressive panhandling. In the interim between the time we passed that law and now, the American Civil Liberties Union challenged these aggressive panhandling laws in federal court, essentially arguing that the laws prohibit free speech on the part of the panhandling individual. The federal courts upheld the American Civil Liberties Union argument and struck down the aggressive solicitation ordinances, and this has now occurred in a wide number of cases, to the extent that we received a letter from the American Civil Liberties Union advising that either we strike down this ordinance or we're going to face suit in federal court to have a judge determine the constitutionality of our ordinance. In reviewing the cases, in my estimation, we would probably lose that litigation, given the case law that has been established at this point. As a practical matter, we have not prosecuted anybody under this ordinance since the time that we passed it, and we now have in our code book a number of other ordinances that are less strident in dealing with panhandling that our police officers can use if there is a problem, particularly with respect to the disorderly conduct statutes. And so, my recommendation is that we repeal this ordinance. I don't think if we litigate with the ACLU, it would be a worthwhile experience. I think we would probably lose the litigation, and I think it's better at this point for us to repeal this ordinance and rely upon the other ordinances that we do have.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the emergency clause or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Ordinance 175-18 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 176-18, an ordinance approving and accepting the plat of South Court Village subdivision, known as being Medina City Lots 9082 and 9083, and creating new Medina City Lots 9224 and 9230.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion. Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance would be the service of the final plat for the South Court Village subdivision. That subdivision, as many of you know, has been under construction for a couple of years. Council authorized a construction agreement several years ago. The property owners are coming forward today to ask council to accept this. We recommend accepting it. They have completed all the improvements necessary for the roadway and all the utilities and sidewalks and streetlights. They've submitted the required fees and deposits, so there's no objection from the engineering department to go ahead and accept the final plat for South Court Village.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordinance 176-18 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 177-18, an ordinance authorizing expenditure to VASU Communications for the purchase of a new radio system for the Medina Fire Department.
Move to approve. Second.[1386.97]